Welcome to the Mayor and Council Meeting. It's September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven thirty P. M. Linda, will you please call the meeting to order and read the Open Public Meetings Act announcements?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four sunshine notice was sent to the records, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website. Councilman Deloissio.
Here.
Councilwoman Holman. Councilwoman Lovasolo. Councilman O'Connell. Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Yakarino.
Here.
Mayor Wazinski.
Here. Everybody, please stand to salute the flag.
At pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have approval of minutes next, September fifth, work and regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Councilman Deloissio.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
All right, next we have a proclamation recognizing the month of September as Hunger Action Month. This is something we started last year, right? Did we start last year, two years? And it actually was a great success, so we are going to do it again, where people actually bring their food to Borough Hall. So I will read the proclamation. Whereas hunger and food insecurity are reality for far too many of our neighbors, and whereas those who are food insecure or without reliable access to adequate amount of affordable nutritious food, food insecurity can affect anyone, whether they're recently unemployed, underemployed, or supporting a large family. And whereas food insecurity is a symptom of broader challenges, such as unemployment, disability, retirement, or unforeseen financial hardships. And whereas those who do not have their basic needs met are further hampered in their path towards self-sufficiency. And whereas ongoing economic instability has increased food insecurity amongst individuals and families throughout Bergen County and across the county. And whereas food pantries in Bergen County have experienced an approximately twenty-two percent increase of need for food assistance. And whereas there are residents in every municipality in Bergen County who receive S. N. A. P. SNAP benefits illustrating that this is an issue impacting residents all over Bergen County. And whereas economic coattails of the pandemic are long and despite the end of federal and state emergency declarations, tremendous needs still exist within our community. And whereas the Bergen County Food Security Task Force was established to support food pantries in Bergen County by increasing the supply of healthy food options, connecting those in need to vital services and investing in long-term infrastructure to build a more resilient pantry network to ensure no one in Bergen County goes hungry. And whereas Bergen County Food Security Task Force has been incorporated into the Department of Human Services as the new office of food security to reaffirm that the county's commitment to fighting hunger continues past the pandemic. And whereas the energy philanthropy and hands-on effort of a multitude of volunteers throughout the county make tremendous impact in combating hunger in our community and are vital in meeting the struggles of our neighbors with compassion. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council hereby recognize the month of September, two thousand and twenty-four, as Hunger Action Month in the Borough of Allendale, and encourages all Bergen County residents to support their local food pantries. Be it further resolved that the Borough of Allendale is committed to ending hunger in Bergen County and will spread awareness and increase engagement in our community to solve this problem by hosting a food drive through the month of October at Borough Hall for the center for for the Center of Action, it's actually it's missing, yeah, for the Center of Food Action. Okay. So this was actually, yes, a great success last year. I remember there was the the Borough Hall offices were just packed with food. So it's true, if the basic needs aren't met, you really can't do the old, you know, math law of security. So I'm very happy that we're doing this, and we can do our part and be of service.
Our residents always turn out to help when the observers put out something there, it's always a fault.
That's great, yeah. And sometimes it's just neat, you need that convenience, right, to to do it like, so it's nice and local, so.
We will, Mayor, we will have a box in the lobby area of Borough Hall.
Okay.
For collection.
Perfect.
Through October.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to review the agenda very quickly. We have two ordinances. One ordinance is to amend Chapter fifty-three, which is our salary, wages, and compensation. So what we're doing here is combining some of our services for Kevin Todd, so he's our fire official, and he's also going to be a part of other code official services. And then our second ordinance, twenty-four dash one six one six, is establishing business insurance registry in the Borough of Allendale. Would you like to speak to this at all in Dallas?
It's just the requirement that, you know, it's for businesses and for landlords.
Just tidying up our records.
So we're going to put a letter out to to all the businesses in town, and they'll have to get that to us, you know, all the necessary information, and we have the module on.
Yep, it's all that records. Excellent, thanks for handling that. Okay, and then we have our consent agenda. These are routine, and they're usually enacted in one motion. I like to review some of them. But there's not really any interesting ones. Cancellation of taxes. Authorizing cancellation of outstanding check. We are actually appointing a couple new crossing guards. And we had an overpayment of taxes, not my, not my house. And then, again, the authorization to hire Kevin Todd as the as the C. C. O. Inspector, as I just mentioned in our ordinance. And also, we have a new intern in the police department, so that's always good. All right. So now I would like to open the meeting for public comment on anything, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Savastano, twenty-two Vreeland Place. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to give an update to the activities of the Green Team from the summer.
Super.
Yeah, we've been very busy. And I came up with an idea that I've investigated to collect pumpkins and gourds, cornstalks, and mumps. And I've approached Rosslers and Borst to be locations for the collections, and they were very enthusiastic about the idea. So I think that's going to be quite a bit of weight that will be kept out of the trash stream. And also, that's all compostable material, so it'll just be returned to the earth where it does its job instead of riding it a landfill. We have made contact, or I should say, contact was made to us from two students from the Northern Highlands. And they were interested in joining the Green Team. And I invited them to come and speak before the council at the next meeting. Hopefully, that will be a meeting where everybody is present. Chrissy Viedem and Will Skripak.
Are you going to bring to this meeting?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Yes, I said it'd be a great way to introduce themselves and introduce their interest in sustainability. Will is actually a scout who helped us out over the summer with one of our E. P. S. Styrofoam collections and came with us to Ridgefield Park and helped us densify the material. And that helped fulfill part of his Eagle Scout project. And I had originally suggested to him about the pumpkin collection, but it seems that they won't get approval in time to have it happen. It won't happen before Halloween, the approval. So he's going to be part of it. He has promised to have scouts there as volunteers. And that prompted younger scouts to start contacting the Green Team. And we are just becoming more popular and more well-known, and and that really.
And hip, you're hip, all the high school kids want to join.
So we have lots of volunteers going forward. Also, I want to commend Andy and his new staff members. I've been to the recycling center a number of times, and they've helped me recover a great deal of the E. P. S. from the dumpster there. People are bringing it there, hoping to recycle it, and of course, they're told we don't accept it. So Jim, one of the new employees, gave me a pitchfork to grab it out of the dumpster. So that was. I filled up several bags of them with the material, and we brought it for recycling. He has since offered that we can put some type of container there, and we can collect it outside of the dumpster, which of course would be preferable to me as well.
That probably is better.
But yeah, so the, a little bit more on that collection. We're going to have two, one immediately after Halloween and one immediately following Thanksgiving. The Saturdays following the the holidays. So we'll be busy planning, putting up posters, and hopefully get some traction through.
Make sure you got us something for our newsletter.
Yes, for the newsletter, for the website, for oh-seven-four-oh-one. And we'll hope to see you there for a photo opportunity as well. But thanks for hearing me out, and the Green Team continues to be very active in town.
Excellent, thanks for all your work, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience wishing to speak? Not seeing anyone, I'll bring the meeting back. So now we will introduce ordinance twenty-four dash one five. Linda, will you please read the title?
Ordinance twenty-five dash fifteen, an ordinance to amend Chapter fifty-three of the Code of the Borough of Allendale, officers and employees to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year two thousand and twenty-four.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
I'm sorry, Councilman Deloissio.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-four dash fifteen has now been introduced upon first reading and will be published in the Wednesday, September twenty-fifth edition of the record and will take, will be taken up for further consideration and final passage at the regular meeting of the mayor and council on October third, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven thirty P. M. or soon thereafter.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty-four dash one six. Please, Linda, read the title.
Ordinance twenty-four dash sixteen, an ordinance establishing business insurance registry in the Borough of Allendale.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Councilman Deloissio.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-four dash sixteen has now been introduced upon first reading and will be published in the Wednesday, September twenty-fifth edition of the record and will be taken up for further consideration and final passage at a regular meeting of the mayor and council on October third, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven thirty P. M. or soon thereafter.
Well, thank you very much. Next, we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Councilman Deloissio.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
All right, council reports, Councilman Yakarino.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it brief this evening. We had our Crestwood end-of-season meeting with myself. Andy had also provided some input before the meeting, and the mayor and myself. We had a lot of different topics to cover, including operations. Key topics included membership trends, year-over-year revenue expenditures, water quality, staffing, and events. And on that topic, we'd like to extend our gratitude to Terty Poggi, who will be resigning as our Crestwood Events Coordinator. She's been a longtime employee of Crestwood Lake and started with Crestwood as a lifeguard and, you know, since moved up to working with the events through the lake. So we wish her very well. So next year, we'll be looking to either have somebody within Borough Hall take over events, or maybe we'll just do that within committee. Regarding the concession stand, we anticipate the opening up submitted bids next week. We're very excited for that. I'd like to thank Andy and the D. P. W. for working to make improvements on our fields based off of feedback from the Allendale Sports Alliance. One of the fields, or two fields, rather, that we're working on are the football field and the soccer field that we're working on making improvements. And one of the resolutions out of the last Allendale Sports Alliance meeting was to close the West Maple Field so that we can continue to make more extensive improvements long term. Special thanks to Allison for continuing our efforts improving our facilities here in Borough Hall. We collaborate with Hickey Electric to move some of our communications, infrastructure, and equipment from the clerk's office to a more secure location, ensuring compliance with the Jif cyber standards. And finally, the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Real I. D. Event at the Firehouse last week, the two days went off with no issues. Thank you, Andy, for facilitating that. And then our next motor vehicle event will be another inspection event on October fourth at Crestwood.
Rankin knows that, don't you?
It's a great program, and our residents.
Honestly, thank you so much for, you know, initiating that. It really is a great program, and residents love it because everybody knows what a nightmare it is to go down to the D. M. V., so.
It's also super fast.
Yeah, right.
I was in and out in fifteen minutes.
And you can't, don't want to, can't you get me in a play with?
We're going to, so like I said, October fourth is the next inspection, we'll probably do another real I. D. N. D. center.
Yeah.
And I hear through the rumor mill that the state is going to be postponing the implementation yet again.
Yet again.
So anyway, that's all, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty brief report this evening, as I mentioned in our last meeting, due to the very busy nature of September. Our meeting was pushed a month, so we met this past Monday. Our two new officers has finished their field training, so they are out on the streets doing policing things, keeping the borough safe. We discussed the crossing guards, the new spots, everything is working out very well. Couple of minor adjustments to be made. We discussed our perennial issue of downtown parking with the new officers. That should help to alleviate some of the issues that we're seeing down there. As you mentioned in the consent agenda, we have a new police intern, he's working with the O. E. M. And finally, next Thursday, Walter, is the blood drive at the Firehouse from one to seven P. M. The A. B. and G. has partnered with us on this one, and they're offering a pint for a pint. So pint of blood for a pint of beer or a glass of wine or a soft drink. And we're very.
Right to your head, right, wouldn't you think?
Well, I don't think you, that's why they give you a voucher, and they don't just.
Yeah, I don't think it walks on over.
You do what you want to do with your voucher, but I'm very happy to say that, once again, the scouts will be helping out at the blood drive, so come on out and roll up your sleeves.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Deloissio.
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last meeting, the D. P. W. Committee did not meet. Just quick conversations with our superintendent, Andy Agugliero. The D. P. W. is continuing their regular duties. We appreciate all their efforts. I know they're prepping Crestwood for, you know, the draining of the lake and, you know, preparing the final closing of everything. They continue to maintain fields, as Councilman Yakarino mentioned. And our new mechanic is working out very well. He's acclimating well for the borough, and we're very happy to have him on board. So that's pretty much my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Staff reports, Linda, our clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. On September twelfth, I attended the New Jersey Film Ready Workshop in Trenton. There, the program is a multi-step training and certification process, which helps areas in the municipalities to prepare and market themselves as film destinations. The Film Ready Program is part of the New Jersey Motion Pictures and Television Commission, which is under the New Jersey Economic Development Authority. The program is helping the state's film industry grow by giving municipalities and counties the tools needed to welcome top-tier productions to their communities. The benefits of of this program is that Allendale will be tagged as located in a film-ready community in Real Scout online library. We'll, we'll have unlimited access to Real Scout to upload location photos on a rolling basis. It creates opportunities for local, small minority, and women-owned businesses. Also, the the Allendale will also attain film-ready community status recognition. Also be able to put the Film Ready New Jersey logo on the website, the Borough website. So what I've been doing is I took a sample ordinance that they provided us. And then our current ordinance, I'm just going through and I'm comparing and making changes and updating it.
Thank you.
And then I have to submit that to the commission first.
Okay.
For them to go over it before we can introduce it.
Okay.
And Amanda already got ahead on just listing some locations. So what she did is we got Crestwood Lake. We got Crestwood Lake. We got the Fell House, we're not really sure. We got West Allendale Ave, you know, all that whole area. Celery Farm, we're not sure, and the Grandstands. And what she did is she provided a brief description of each. So this way, when the photos are uploaded onto that website, it just gives it, so this way, when the scouts go on.
Yeah.
And if they're looking for something in particular, they can just go through everything and say, hey, it's right here in Allendale. So she, one of her, the things that she really liked is possibly the Grandstand, because she says that would be like a good movie.
It totally would, yeah.
For like, you know, theme. So so once, you know, we're just, we're going to wrap that up and start that as soon as we can.
No, thank you. This is something I've been talking about for a while, because we were at one meeting, I guess in A. C., where they were talking about how Netflix is moving to Monet. So this is just a really good opportunity for the borough. As we know, boroughs don't have a lot of opportunity to make revenue. And to kind of get a jump ahead of it, I was at a mayor's meeting where the county was saying that they did, what's that movie? Not Head, not with Adam Sandler. Happy Gilmore, they were doing at one of the county parks. And they had, it was because they were film-ready, they actually extended their filming time, so they made a lot of actually revenues. So we're going to be film-ready, and we're going to be we're going to be ready for all the movie stars to come to Allendale, if it's not too disruptive. Sometimes it is very disruptive, so we have to balance that with.
And I'll, and I'll run it through Ray's office as well before beforehand, just to kind of make the final touches.
Great.
Well, it was a lot of fun when they film presumed innocent here.
Yeah, do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. Excellent, all right. Our superintendent of the D. P. W., Andy Agugliero.
Now, I do have my blood and my full set of everything, critical.
Thank you.
And must echo what Tyler said about how Borough Hall looks, looks fantastic. Kudos to Allison for that. Made. Our new Borough mechanic, CJ, is working out phenomenally, as is Joey and Drew. Part one of two of our Streetscape projects has started today, so they mobilized. Hope everybody liked the upgrades to the nine eleven memorial this year. Beautiful. Did receive a lot of comments on it. D. P. W.'s preparing fields for full sporting events, which are underway. We have added a new half-flag football field across from the park inside Crestwood Lake. They finished that up yesterday.
Where?
Right across the street from the park inside Crestwood, where the kid park is.
Furnished field?
When you're, when you're driving up, you're going to the red lawn, you have the playground on the left, and there's an open lot on the right.
Oh.
But a half a football field.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I saw kids playing there last week.
Why would you use junior football?
Because we were shifting fields around. It's going to take West Maple out of service for rehab.
I did not know that.
This is what the the A. S. A. folks that requested.
So that's going to take up parking, I guess, right? If we have an event, that's where we sometimes park, but I guess it's in the.
Well, it's only for the bad.
Yeah.
So the lower multi-purpose field was converted to a soccer field, and we, as of Monday, were taking up West Maple to fill that out of service for rehab, like Tyler said. And lastly, we started de-divisioning Crestwood Lake. And prepping for the new consent.
Sound like you're just filling it up.
I know, right?
All right, our attorney Ray Wes hasn't been busy at all.
Yeah, a couple things have gone on. Continue to work on the, the, after the closing matters on the sale of the water utility, including a meeting this evening with the with Mayor and Councilwoman Holman. Mayor signed a couple of easement agreements this evening, so we work with the Ole Miss Council in trying to get that done. We've also had meetings involving the mayor, Councilwoman Holman, Andy, myself, Mike Vreeland, working on the diversion process. And on tonight's agenda, Resolution two thirty-two was hiring an environmental consultant to do an assessment of the site on New Street that we're proposing to to dedicate to passive recreation as part of the diversion process with Green Acres. We met earlier this evening in the same group to discuss some ongoing sewer-related issues with our neighbors in Saddle River. And that, I suppose, will be a focus of some continuing discussions going forward. Some conversations with Chief Dillon on some departmental matters. We've had some certain things involving the the bylaws and related items at the Fire Department. Affordable housing, as the mayor's previously reported, the borough has joined in the litigation in which Monville is the lead agency. That complaint has been filed. We're in communication with the attorney that is representing the group. He provided a, actually, a status update this morning that I shared with the mayor. I think the litigation is actually in its very formative stage. The state is not due to respond till about mid-October, and then it'll take shape. I was told by T. J. and Tom today that the leases on the cell tower are in circulation pending signature, so hopefully that revenue stream will be come on board shortly. And lastly, while I had reported that the settlement conference on P. K. was supposed to have taken place earlier this month. Unfortunately, the attorney for P. K. was hospitalized, so the conference was put off to October twenty-eighth. That's it, Mayor.
That's it. All right. And my report. Two-ten, West Crescent, our community center is coming along nicely. I think everybody in the council has actually seen it now. We are putting up, we just put up our TVs, our security is currently going in, and actually, our new entrance system is going in. We're working on systems and operations and procedures and regulations in in Borough Hall. We have to signage up, we have to figure out a lot of stuff before it's actually open to the community, including buying some furniture. So we're still hoping it's going to be maybe a soft opening by the end of the year, but definitely by the beginning of two thousand and twenty-five. The nine eleven ceremony was beautiful. Tim LaTurner was a great speaker. It's always the most beautiful ceremony, so this year was no different, and thank you for making it look so beautiful. The residents really appreciated, they come all day to reflect, so it's, it's really important that that's, looks so nice, it's good. We have Allendale Day this Saturday, so the borough will have a booth. In the spirit of keeping government transparent, we are going to try to sign everybody and anybody up for our newsletter and for constant contact and for Facebook and Instagram. We are just pushing information out there, and if you don't have a computer, we'll even mail the newsletter to you. There's so much great information in our newsletter. I write a mayor's report every month. I'm constantly sending out memos and updates, so everybody should be informed about everything in the borough. And if you don't want to read it, I guess you don't have to, but it's out there.
I read it.
Thank you. We had our third of our four town halls this week, and this one was on deer management. As I mentioned, it is one of the most talked-about topics in town. It's the, one of the biggest complaints that I get from residents, but it's also a very emotional and triggering topic for a lot of people. So I brought in the D. E. P., the Department of Environmental Protection, and Tyco, who is our animal control company, who are literally the boots on the ground, to explain and give facts, just objective facts on on things that we could do to help control the deer population. At one point in the meeting, I asked, I think there was probably about seventy-five people here, I asked, who is in favor of deer management? And I would say ninety percent of the people raised their hand, or even more. So it is something that people, it's just gotten out of control, unfortunately, and quite frankly, it's something I wish we didn't have to do. But I think the numbers are out there, and it's getting, it's getting a little scary. The the car accidents are getting scary. It's, it's actually not really very humane for the deer either that are getting killed by cars that are maimed and hobbling around with broken legs and stuff, so. To be continued. So we'll continue also to update everybody on that. And our Streetscape, our sixth or seventh phase of the Streetscape started today, so that's on Central Drive. That's going to go along the street by the train station, and then after that, it's going to be Demecurio. And then we have one other little section on Demecurio that then we're done. So our downtown is looking really spiffy, just in time for filming.
Film-ready.
Film-ready, and that is my report for the day. Any questions? All right. Any unfinished business or new business? I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on any comments, any matter, anybody from the public? Walter, come on up.
I'm down, Walter.
Walter, when you're thirty-eight, how much?
Walter, under thirty-eight Hamilton. I got a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
What was the success of the one drive? How successful was it?
It's very successful. So in our little, uh in our drive last, the last drive, I think we had thirty-nine people. Uh each, you know, pint is capable of saving three lives, so we did alright that day. Um overall, he's doing exceptionally well. He's running about sixty drives a year now.
My next question is curiosity. These proclamations which you read.
Why do I say we're us? I'm.
What is your function?
Oh, it's um the function of a proclamation? Well, maybe you could help me with this. It's it's like an honor. Um it's an honor for um a declaration to honor either an event or a person. Can I explain that?
Yeah, and this way, when they're read at a public meeting, they're in the public record. So so for organizations who are having these read in multiple places, it also gives them the ability to say we're recognized by the Borough of Allendale, by the County of Bergen, by the State of New Jersey, whatever the case is. So it's, you know, noteworthy causes or events, uh and then the mayor reads them into the public record.
And it gives the organization something that solidifies it a little bit as well. And uh I sign it and we give this sometimes to the organization. Some people hang them up, you know, or.
Is that a voluntary procedure or mandated or what?
Oh, no, it's not mandated. No, it's just something, it's actually one of the nicer things we do, quite frankly.
Can I ask you one other question that I had? That's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Walter, I I had one for the board workers, just to recognize all their hard work. So it's really just to kind of like honor, you know, the board workers for their hard work and long hours and, you know, things like that, so.
Good. I like that. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Not seeing anyone. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.